Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of Moreno Valley. Not yet? Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, tonight, June 5th, 2018. The first presentation are the business spotlights. And we have a special presentation for Oishi Sushi and Teriyaki, which is a family-friendly restaurant that has established deep roots within the Moreno Valley community. Located at 23-581 Sunnymead Ranch Parkway, number 123, Oishi has been in business for nine years. Owner Steven Lim says that the best part about being a Moreno Valley business is watching both the city and his customers grow alongside his business. Here, customers are greeted by the same, by some of the best sushi chefs in the area, who expertly craft the menu with their customers, who inspire new and creative sushi rolls, such as a Moreno Valley roll and the volcano roll, which is served tableside on fire. Make sure you ask for the popular Jessica roll, or the smack that fish, which is one, which is an off-the-menu item, featuring spicy tuna, avocado, and spider crab wrapped in soy paper, with fried onions. At Oishi, there is something for everyone, from sushi novices to sushi lovers, and everything in between. Today, we recognize Oishi Sushi and Teriyaki with this business spotlight video.
Experience the best sushi in Moreno Valley at Oishi. Our chefs expertly handcraft delicious dishes like sashimi with sushi, the Jessica roll, and the rainbow roll, along with modern and creative rolls, such as the Moreno Valley roll, and the famous volcano roll, which is served tableside on fire. So, whether you like traditional or modern, Oishi has the sushi you crave.
Unfortunately, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back.
District 2 is my district. I'd like you people to know that. And as a District 2 council member, I have a right to present these business spotlights to represent our businesses.
Okay, the rolling should stop, we're taking a five-minute break.
What I'd like to do is present my personal certificate to the owner.
Mr. Lim, on behalf of the City Council of Moreno Valley and the city and its residents, we're presenting this business spotlight certificate to you. This is for you. And we also have the flash drive with the presentation you saw, and you can put it on your Facebook, on your website, and everywhere else. And this will play for about two weeks, so you get free advertisement. So make sure you get your customers to watch it.
Thank you.
See? So, thank you so much. Would you like to say some words?
Hi, my name is Steve. I've been doing Oishi since 2009, so going on our ninth year. Wanted to thank the city for everything that they do, and helping businesses, especially small businesses like me. I do have another business next door called Aspar as well. But this isn't possible without my chefs. My chefs, yeah, they're not here, they're actually serving customers right now. I wish they could come. But Sonny, Nikki, and Tay, they've been with me for seven years now, and they really deserve the credit. They're the ones that keep it consistent, keep the customers coming back, and hopefully, you know, you guys can keep coming and experience new foods. If you guys have never tried it, there's always something for everyone there. So, I wanted to thank the city for acknowledging it as well, and thank you guys so much.
And I can attest to the food. I've eaten there several times. It's one of my granddaughter's favorite locations as well, and Steve is an excellent host, so come by and have some sushi, if that's what you like, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give Oishi another round of applause. And thank you for doing business in Moreno Valley. Next on the agenda is a second business spotlight, which is Cajun Wild, and council member Cabrera will speak and present the certificate of recognition to this business.
You wanna do your own?
We're gonna take another five-minute recess.
District 2 is my district.
Good evening, everyone. You get recognized twice tonight, that's how special you are, so. Tonight, we are recognizing Cajun Wild located in District 2. Cajun Wild is a soulful business designated to make you feel welcome, comforted, and at home. Owners Christopher and Sean Sherman enjoy the ability to provide home-cooked meals in a family-oriented restaurant that caters to the community. Located at 12256 Paris Boulevard, Suite A, patrons can expect to walk into soul music, friendly customer service, and great food. Some favorite dishes at Cajun Wild include the greens, yams, macaroni and cheese, and cornbread made fresh every day. I'm getting hungry, I should have ate before this. Mr. and Ms. Sherman are longtime residents of Moreno Valley with a history in the medical and public sector fields. Their dream was to open a restaurant and bring together their passion for helping others with their love of cooking. Today, we recognize Cajun Wild with this business spotlight video.
Are you craving some good old homemade Cajun cooking, but don't wanna travel 2,000 miles and deal with the locals? We mean the Gators. Well then, we got some mouthwatering news for you. Food so good, your taste buds will think it's Mardi Gras. We got the authentic Cajun flavor right here in Moreno Valley. Cajun Wild, spicing up your life with a little down-south flavor.
And if Mr. Christopher and Sean Sherman can please join me up here at the mic? And on behalf of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present to you the certificate for your business, and also, a flash drive that has that video, so you can share it online. If you need any help, let me know. I can help you out with all that. So here is that. And would you like to say a few words?
Just really quick, I don't wanna, we definitely appreciated, my wife and I, like I said, we're longtime residents here, and we feel so much more part of the community now, with the faces that come in, and actually, some of them that we recognize here, we had no idea who you all were. But, but thank you so much, we definitely appreciate the acknowledgement and the recognition, and that is a wonderful, it didn't even look like our thing, that's really surprising, that was really good. So, thank you, thank you so much, we definitely appreciate it. Thank you very much, excellent job. Thank you, thank you.
Hey, let's give Cajun Wild another round of applause. And do we have Jeremy Moreno present tonight? Yeah? Okay. The next presentation is a commendation recognizing the bravery and service of Jeremy Moreno, presented by Mayor Gutierrez.
If I could have Jeremy come up? Alright, let's give him a round of applause. Hey, Jeremy. So tonight, it's really a very special night, because not only are we recognizing a resident in our city, a longtime resident in our city, but we're really recognizing someone that went above and beyond, not in the city, in the region, in the state, but he actually went internationally. So, one such person is Jeremy Moreno, who provided valuable service in Puerto Rico following the destruction left in the wake of Hurricane Maria. Many people do recognize the need for service following a natural disaster, or a time of crisis such as Hurricane Maria, but few people have the intuitive leadership to gather the necessary supplies and travel to an area that they don't know, that they are unfamiliar with, in order to take action in a time of crisis. It is the clear-headed and rapid response that gives the people enduring a crisis the best chance to come out with the least amount of damage, and it is reassuring to know that we have leaders right here in the city, Jeremy Moreno, who can think clearly and act quickly under pressure here in your very own city. And so, the City Council, the mayor of the City of Moreno Valley, would like to present this commendation to Jeremy Moreno in recognition of his service and spirit of leadership and the community. And this commendation reads the following. Whereas Jeremy Moreno gathered medicine and water filtration systems and traveled to Puerto Rico with no knowledge of what he would encounter upon his arrival, he joined the RBC Maria Relief Group and worked to repair roofs, clear roads, and distribute food and water. And whereas, the ability to bring hope and effect a positive change in the face of adversity touched Jeremy Moreno in a way that inspired him to become an emergency medical technician and continue to maintain contact with his fellow RBC volunteers. Now therefore, be resolved that the mayor and the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of all of the citizens and staff, does hereby commend Jeremy Moreno for his extraordinary work, for his unparalleled spirit of service and leadership in a time of crisis. His steadfast drive to action has significantly helped the residents of Puerto Rico and provided a remarkable example of service to the community. Let's give him another round of applause. Congratulations, buddy. Jeremy, would you like to say a few words?
First off, I'd like to thank City of Moreno Valley, mayor, also my family out there. Wasn't for anybody, you guys, I wouldn't have powered the video, I wouldn't make it out there. It was kinda just on a whim thing, I have a lot of family out in Puerto Rico, so, kinda started a little GoFundMe real quick for a couple thousand dollars, just get a plane ticket, and a couple little items, stuff, water, food, whatever I can take out there. A lot of people helped me a lot, I wouldn't be able to get there without any of the support that I had behind me. It's kind of on a whim thing, like I said, I was on the couch with my mom one day, and seeing all this destruction and stuff like that, and we've been out to Puerto Rico a lot of time, family's from Maya West, Puerto Rico. Just a kid, I mean, went out there, tried to do whatever I can, help the people out there. Few weeks in, I named it Operation Smile Puerto Rico, because I figured, if I can get one person to smile out there in a time of distress and time of destruction like that, I can, they can pass on another smile, and everyone on the island, for the time, can be smiling and stuff like that, so. We'll be back next month, I'm getting married out there, in the same city, or same town that I helped out and stuff like that, where I was based in, so. It was a good time, thank you guys again, I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the presentation in recognition of the Miss Moreno Valley Scholarship Pageant Title Holders. So be ready, we have lots of beauty in here. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the certificates.
Tonight, we would like to recognize the achievements and service of the Miss Moreno Valley Scholarship Pageant Title Holders. These young women have been recognized for their contributions to the betterment of their community, as well as academic excellence and community involvement. If Ms. Brittany Baxter, Sarah Dunham, and Mercedes Jones could please join me up here at the front? First off, we have Ms. Brittany Baxter, who has been on the honor roll since kindergarten, is on multiple varsity teams, and is involved in theater as well as her church. Her service and positive attitude led her to be named Miss Moreno Valley 2018. Next, we have Ms. Sarah Dunham, who is an honor student and participates in multiple school clubs, but she also volunteers her time visiting terminally ill patients at nursing homes, and participating in programs to assist the homeless. Her service and achievements caused her to be named Miss Teen Moreno Valley 2018. And third, we have Ms. Mercedes Jones, who has been active in sports at her school and volunteers with local food pantries, ill children, and horse rescue. Ms. Jones was named Miss Sunnymead 2018. The City Council would like to recognize these energetic and giving young women, as well as the Miss Moreno Valley Scholarship Pageant, for encouraging our local youth to engage in community service and take an active role in the community enhancement and mentorship. And we have these certificates here on behalf of the city, for Brittany Baxter, for Sarah Dunham, and Mercedes Jones.
Thank you so much.
And is anyone else here with you, maybe your coaches, or anyone else that you wanna bring up? Anyone else? Do you wanna come up with them? No? Okay, alrighty. Okay.
Our little sister.
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up, come on up. And would any of you care to say a few words?
I would just like to say, it's an honor to be here and an honor to have this title. We hope to make a positive impact on Moreno Valley and the surrounding community. Thank you.
The final presentation is a recognition of the employees of the first quarter. Nicholas Rens, David Cerna, Victor Ariola, Raul Lopez, George Chang, Ernie Pressy, Oscar Salinas, and Jesse Flores. Will be presented by the mayor.
Alright, so tonight, we are recognizing employees of the second quarter. We have certificates for them, and then also, an incentive as well. So if I could have the employees come up to, right up, right over here? Let's give them a round of applause. If you guys wanna come more this way, maybe some over here on the side, and then, yeah, there we go. So tonight, we have Nick Rens, David Cerna, Victor Ariola, Raul Lopez, George Chang, Ernie Pressy, Oscar Salinas, and Jesse Flores. The above-mentioned staff members, and I'd like to ask Kathleen, oh, okay, are you coming?
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, okay, alright. I'd like to really acknowledge these staff members for their hard work, for being part of the concrete crew, the construction crew, and the Vactra crew, and they only had less than a month, get this, less than a month, to construct a high-end monument. And I don't know if you've seen it, coming off of the 215 on Cactus, it says, it says Moreno Valley, really, really beautiful, and it was just constructed recently. The sign was installed within the landscape median on one of the busiest arterial streets in the city, Cactus. After accepting the assignment on March 12th, they were able to design the sign, identify and order the necessary materials and supplies, and construct it within less than 25 days. Isn't that amazing? Let's give them a round of applause. Not only did they race against the clock to finish the project before the airshow, they also had to battle the elements of the weather that we had at the time. And if that wasn't enough, they had to ensure that the architectural finishes were ordered, manufactured, and delivered on time. This monument sign welcomed a reported 300,000 attendees to the airshow. Additionally, it will stay in place to welcome residents back to their homes on an arterial street that sees about 39,000 vehicles each and every day. And what's so amazing about this sign that they were able to construct, is that it really puts Moreno Valley on the map, and that's, that's just amazing. So, let's go and give them another round of applause, congratulations. Would any of you like to say a few words? If not, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Let's take a picture.
Do you want to move in the middle, and she tip over this one?
Actually, you can take a tiny step back this way.
Yeah.
Look at this one.
Oh, no, this way.
There you go, there you go.
Awesome, perfect.
Do you have some more pictures over here?
Yeah, come on over.
Nice.
Thank you, thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Love the good work. Thank you, keep up the good. Thank you so much to our employees for the job well done. That concludes the special presentations, and we'll start in about 10 minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, the mayor says that we'll reconvene the City Council meeting in two minutes.
Yes.
Thank you so much to our employees for the job well done. That concludes the special presentations, and we'll start in about 10 minutes. Two minutes? Okay, the mayor says that we'll reconvene the City Council meeting in two minutes.
Community Services District, City Excessor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on June 5th, 2018, at 6:10 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Lupe Gonzalez from Templeo de Milagros International Church.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray and agree for the blessing. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for your love and your mercy. At this time, we come together in this meeting, and I ask you for the blessing in this meeting, for the presence and the guidance of your Holy Spirit. I bless this meeting, I bless our city, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Lupe Gonzalez from Templeo de Milagros Church. Thank you for coming, always. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba.
I'm here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Marquez is absent. Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Huckesmeyer, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Mark Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Design Director.
Rick Sanzemaire, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kerlowitz, Chief of Police.
Mark Williams, Battalion Chief Fire Department.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, staff. Welcome to everyone to the City Council meeting. The city is currently offering Spanish service, translation services in the back. So if anyone is interested, please feel free to go back there. Before we hear public comments this evening, council will take action on Item Agenda G1, which is the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program Promoting Employment Development. And so we'll have a report of City Clerk.
Mayor, Shanna Palau, our management analyst, will be providing this report for you.
Good evening, Shanna.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'm Shanna Palau, your management analyst. The item for your consideration tonight is a proposal for an exciting new collaborative internship program with the Moreno Valley Unified School District. It's called, and get ready for this, because it's kind of a mouthful, "The Mayor's Apprenticeship Program Promoting Employment Development." But we're going to call it MAPT for short, just because it's kind of a mouthful. The program is a biannual youth employment development program for at-risk youth. And at-risk, at-risk youth includes youth that are mild to moderate special needs, English learners, and those who are in families with low socio-economic resources. The purpose of the program is to enhance career readiness of, of this particular student population, help meet local workforce needs, and develop positive contributing members of our community. As you all know, the future of our great city is in the hands of our young people. And so therefore, the community needs well-developed, socially and civically engaged young people who are prepared to enter the workforce. MBUSD already does a great job in these work experience programs. They have the Asterix Program and Workability Program. So they're already doing a great job. But the challenge with that is that the participating businesses who provide the internship placements for the students participating in those programs don't have the capacity to serve all the interested students. So recognizing that gap in the placement opportunities and understanding the sizable at-risk student population, Mayor Gutierrez has championed the development of this new program. If approved this evening, the city will be working with students who are participating in MBUSD's work, school-to-work transition program. And the benefit with working with these particular students is that they will have already had training that helps them with soft skills necessary to begin a work experience program. So generally outlined with, for the MAPT program, will serve about 40 students biannually. Will probably start with about 25, but the program will max out at about 40. Will have two 12-week sessions, one in the fall and one in the spring, and the students will be placed in city departments. The city will provide a $500 stipend per student based on the hours that they work. And so in terms of shared responsibility, the city will provide the stipend, provide the internship placement, and administrative planning and oversight. The school district in turn will provide us the qualified students based on their participation in the school-to-work transition program. Staff training to ensure that staff is, let's see, so that's, they're going to give us some training to help us in developing our mentorship skills, to make sure that it's a meaningful program for the students and for city staff. They'll also provide transportation, and on their end, they'll provide that administrative oversight and planning. Tonight, we're asking for approval for this program and for a budget adjustment of $40,500 for stipend and administrative costs. Additionally, Moreno Valley Unified School District Board of Education approved the joint resolution on May 22nd this year. And that concludes my report.
So much, Shanna. And just to kind of add on a little bit, sometimes it's not only the capacity that sometimes these businesses have, but also the will, sometimes, to, to hire these students with mild to moderate disabilities. And so, you know, the origin of, of all this is that when I owned a business, you know, I participated, when I had a Berry Bean Coffee House, I participated and I had workability students. They turned out to be great students, but some of these students, you know, when they came to me, you know, in the beginning, they, they had gone to so many other locations to try to get hired, or to get that first-time job experience. But they were unable to get that job experience, I guess, because of their learning disability. So, you know, there's a lot of different disabilities under the mild or moderate category, and I think this could service, you know, a lot of students, especially those students that are at need. And I think part of that training that they're also going to provide from the school district is also on how to instruct students with special needs as well. So how to, you know, teach them different job tasks, how to work with them, you know, and those kinds of things, because I think it's, you know, essential. And just, you know, having those, those skills is, is really important. And I believe, just throughout, just support, right, throughout the semester?
Right, yeah. We'll be in constant communication to talk about how the students are performing and if there are any issues that staff needs help with.
And then also, the $40,500 would cover the fall and the spring, which would be the max of 80 students.
Right.
So it'd be a total of 80 students, if the other 40 are different students. So it'd be a total of 80, the max. Okay? Well, thank you, Shanna. Is, we're, go ahead and move straight to council questions of staff? Okay, any public comments, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay. Council deliberation? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
I just want to say that I'm very proud of this program. I work with the special needs community as well. And I want to see that once our students graduate from high school with a certificate of completion, or a high school diploma, I would like to see more and more, our percentages grow with this program and the other programs that the school district already has, but I want to see the percentages rise as how many are employed, not only part-time, but full-time after they graduate. And I hope that we'll be able to keep track of what we're doing and report the results further on down the road. And perhaps, we can encourage the workers, the students, to come back when they're adults and, and let us know how this program helped them. I don't know if that's possible, but I, I certainly would like to see that, because we need to keep data and ensure that what we're doing is, is the right, right thing to do. I feel it is, but let's look down the road and see if we could do more.
And I just wanted to commend you, Shanna, for the Summer at City Hall program. You know, she's been the staff liaison with the Summer at City Hall program, and so this is really taking it to now a, a year, you know, one whole complete year. And she has just done an amazing job with the program, along with the staff, and, you know, and Shanna, that we actually won an award with the Summer at City Hall program, because not a lot of cities are actually doing that and looking at the future for our future leaders and our future, you know, adults. So, just wanted to commend you for all the hard work that you do on that program. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, sir. Roy Blackard.
How many speakers?
Three. Roy Blackard, Richard Archer, and Jose Chavez.
Okay, is Roy Blackard here? Okay, and if we can have Rick, and then Jose, thank you.
I had the pleasure today of meeting Rod.
One second, Roy, one second. We just want to make sure we get the timer.
It's, it's going.
It's going. Okay, we'll start over again.
Is it?
There we go. I had the pleasure today of, of being in the city of Paris and seeing Roger and Roger from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. They put on a seminar of how to deal with an active shooter, and they had a lot of good advice. The best one they said was, there's three things you, you can do. You can do the right thing, the wrong thing, or nothing. You can do the right thing, the wrong thing, or nothing. And that's what they were saying. When you're in that situation, they were giving you tips and advice of what to do. But the worst thing you can do if you're faced with that situation is to do nothing because more lives will be lost. We had a very good discussion for that. I would like to point out that the mayor of Paris was not embarrassed to sit by me or their staff was not looking around ducking or was freely talking to me while I was out there, which I, I'm just saying for future reference. Next thing I want to talk about is voting. Today's election day. I'm hoping the prediction is wrong that we're going to have a low turnout because in 2014, when we had the general election on a non-presidential year, we had the lowest turnout ever. And I'm hoping we're not going to beat that today. Some of the statistics and a lot of the predictions are. But that's very unfortunate because everybody should be out there and take it, take their responsibility as a citizen to go cast a ballot, no matter which way you feel or who you support. It's very important to participate because there's, I didn't agree with Dicky Stew a lot, but he said, if you don't vote, you're agreeing with the winner. And that's when our last election here, when Ulysses was elected, I said he got elected by ninety percent. He got the votes he got, and the eighty-plus percents that didn't vote voted for him too because they didn't participate. And that's way, and that's the reality of the situation. And I hope everybody looks at that. If you don't participate, if you don't cast your ballot, you know, do you give up, you know, do you give up, not, maybe not your right, but your credibility to come up there and ask for city services or criticize or that because you didn't participate in the process? You have the opportunity, I think you have the civic duty to do it. I hope more people will do it in the future. We need to do that because if we are to be a representative republic, and it's only as strong as the people we have in it and the amount of elbow grease and effort you put into it. You make of your country, your state, your county, of what you put in it, and you get back the same amount. That's my message to Moreno Valley, Riverside County, the state of California, and the good old U.S.A.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker is Richard Archer, followed by Jose Chavez.
Good evening. My name is Richard Archer, and I'm the president of the Moreno Valley Cultural Arts Foundation. And hopefully, most everybody here had a chance to attend our, our art festival this weekend. In conjunction with the, the city, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to partner with the city to put on this particular event. I wanted to extend thank yous to a number of people, beginning with Councilman Cabrera, who approached me back, I guess it was December, as far as to put this event together. And I also wanted to, to commend a few other staff members as far as Patty Solano, as far as her help with this, Alyssa Rico, who did an outstanding job along with Kevin Callister. There was a gentleman from Public Works that was there on, on, very early in the morning by the name of Alfred. I didn't catch his last name, but he did an outstanding job. Matter of fact, the entire Public Works department just was incredible in terms of how they helped set up for us, particularly as far as the, the chalk art portion of that festival. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody as far as working with us. And we, I mean, the turnout was incredible. We had a good turnout as far as the artists and such. We certainly saw a lot of traffic as far as our Vanguard Art Gallery, which hopefully everybody gets a chance to visit if you haven't been there already. Also wanted to let everybody know that we're going to be continuing to do our art walks on June the twenty-third, July twenty-first, and August the eighteenth, from three to six. So if you enjoyed the art festival as far as this last Saturday, we'll be doing exactly the same as far as going forward for the entire summer. The booths that are available there are for free as far as the artists and craft vendors, so please contact us and certainly come out for that. We also have already started working as far as our next chalk art festival. It's going to have a veterans theme. We have some professional chalk artists who are very impressed with what we're doing and have stepped up to help us out. And we also have a commitment on funding for that, so we're going to be probably offering something to the tune of about a thousand-dollar first prize for that particular event. But once again, just wanted to say thank you very much, and again, encourage people to come over and visit us at the Vanguard Art Gallery.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, next speaker is Jose Chavez.
Good evening, city mayor and city councils. Yeah, I was here to say thank you because you, you guys started already the divided right there in Chagall and Alexandro. That's a great, wonderful, that mean we cannot lose any more lives right there in that particular place. So whatever it is, already lost two lives right there, whatever. So now I still, we, our neighbors still ask for a table speed because Friday nights, people are crazy. And I would like to talk to you, Mr. Mayor, please send the notice to those apartments right there to drop it down the speed because most of the people they live in those apartments, they speeding, they still speeding. You know, it's, one day they were killing someone, it's going to be too late for that because the, the table speed is not done yet. If they already started, you know, they, they, they offered this almost a year ago, but till now, nothing has been done. So I don't know, you know, if you guys want to rebuild the street force and then put a table speed or whatever. But the neighbors, they, they still talk to me, what happened with the other signature? We turn it in. You know, and say, I don't know, you know, they, they told me they will do it, but we wait. So in the meantime, in the meantime, this one is for, with full respect, Mr. Chief at the Moreno Valley Police Department, I was turning in one request to meet with you a little bit over two weeks ago. Nothing has been done. I would like to meet with you for whatever things going on, and it's very important and I real interesting to meet with you with another two persons. Okay, please. And for that, I think yesterday in a, in a park, day before yesterday, I say, thanks so much. It was beautiful. A lot of child enjoy it. You know, like the lady say right here, the child are the future. We're getting going down, and this is our future for all United States. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez, for the kind words. And I'm glad that we're fixing some, some of the issues. I'll have a staff reach out to you in regards to the table, speed, the speed tables for those signatures, because I do recall that you turned those in. Okay, so we'll have them reach out to you, see what's going on with that. And then the, the notice to, to the apartments, I believe they're going to be working, working on that. Okay. All right.
Mayor, we have one more speaker, Luis Palomares.
Okay.
Luis Palomares, community activist. You know, it was so nice, Jeremy, to come out here and, God, that is, that is great. Very good young man and doing all he could for, you know, the community and for other places in our, in our state. That's great. I commend him for that. Also, I wanted to talk about the arts fest. It was great. This is the second annual one. It was great. There was plenty of vendors there. I really enjoyed it. Bands, boy, those bands are great. They were so good. Thank you, Cabrera, for bringing that. And let's do it again next year. You do it, I'm not doing it, but he's doing an excellent job there. Thank you so much again. Also, as far as the turf at Moreno Valley Community Park, that is great, too. It's all finished, it looks fantastic. And we're waiting, hopefully next on the agenda or over the horizons will be our skate park for the youth because I know a lot of youth got together for that. Not just the ones that came and dressed the console, but other youths got in on that also as far as online and all that. And a lot, they weren't youths, they were already in the twenties, in college students. That's great. So let's see when that's coming. That's all I got to say today, and thank you so much for your service, Cabrera, for what you do, and Mayor, also, Pro Tem, and Guy, thank you so much.
Thank you for the kind words, Luis. All right, okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments. Would any council members like to make their comments at this time? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll go ahead and move straight to the consent calendar. But prior to that, I do want to acknowledge a few commissioners that we have in the room. We do have Al Dejeanay, Planning Commissioner. If you could please wave your hand. Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Al, for being here. We also have Chris Melendris, Parks, Trails, and Committee Member. Give him a round of applause, thank you. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed in the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council would like that item to be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for reporter discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with any items to be removed. We'll have Councilmember Guyba?
Yes, item number four for separate action and separate vote.
Okay, and that's my appointee, Mayor Appointee?
Yes.
Esther, okay. Any other items to be removed? Okay, council discussion, okay, seeing no one's pressed their button. Madam Clerk, any public comments on the consent calendar?
None.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve excluding item A four for separate action.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tembaka, second by Councilmember Cabrera, please vote. Okay, and it's approved four to zero. We'll go ahead and move on to, we'll, we'll go ahead and take item A four, which is F. And that is Esther Johnson for Traffic Safety Commission, Report of City Clerk.
This item is coming before the council for ratification. The mayor has appointed Ms. Johnson to the Traffic Safety Commission. concludes my report. I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Councilmember Guyba, council questions?
Yeah, I got to be consistent. So, Pat, who takes the applications in? Checks them over to make sure that they're complete, thorough, and prepared to be moved forward for appointment?
We intake them as in the city clerk's office.
Do, is there any vetting you do to make sure it's accurate, complete, and ready to be voted on?
Yes.
Which means you've checked over the application and it was prepared?
Yes, sir, we have.
So I keep going over this, but I'm going to do it again, and I'll do it every time. It says here on the back, it says attendance of at least one meeting is required prior to the appointment. Dates of the meetings attended, they're not there. This person is not, not approvable right now. And I've said it a hundred times before, send it back, have them go to a meeting. But if we're not going to follow the rules that we have for everybody, then I don't even know why we have them or even bother. But she's not, she's not required to be appointed. So, nothing personal, application, just that, that's, she's not finished the application. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments?
None.
Okay, council deliberation. Okay, entertain a motion to approve Esther Johnson, to actually to ratify. Motion by Councilmember Cabrera.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tembaka, please vote. It's approved, three yes, one no. Congratulations, Esther. If you could please stand to be recognized. Thank you, Esther, for your service. Okay, moves us back to item E, public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes. We'll do three minutes tonight. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the bailiff. The first item is the public hearing for delinquent nuisance abatement. Code and Neighborhood Services will have a report from the Community Development Interim Director, Rick Sansomire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Steve Alvarado, our Code and Neighborhood Services Division Manager, to make a brief presentation, and then we'll be available to answer any questions after the public comments.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, as Steve comes to the podium, I'd like to congratulate him on tonight's agenda. The council ratified his appointment as our new Code and Neighborhood Services Division Manager. Congratulations, Steve. Congratulations, Steve. Well deserved.
Can you hear me okay? I'll try to speak up. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. Tonight I bring forward in this public hearing the link with notice to abate for Code and Neighborhood Services. As you're aware, each year we process thousands of cases in Code and Neighborhood Services. Our ultimate goal is to gain compliance from the property owners and managers with their cooperation. However, that doesn't always happen. We need to move forward using the tools that we have implemented currently. One of those tools, we issue administrative citations. We start with notices of violation, notices to abate, given them time, sufficient amount of time to make the corrective actions to bring these notices or these violations into compliance. Thus, each year, we have to move forward and we need to abate numerous hazards, which vary from pools of green stagnant water, overgrown weeds, vacant accessible structures, excuse me, that the property owners are not taking care of. Like we said earlier, our ultimate goal is compliance from these property owners. We issue a notice to abate, we allow them ten days to make the corrective actions. We follow up and continue the process, and ultimately, we have to move forward and get our abatement contractor to abate these nuisances. With that, there is costs incurred by the city to abate these nuisances. We bring forward tonight, we put this on the tax assessor's role with your approval to recover some of those costs. Those costs are already incurred, they're spent, they're out of our budget at this time, so hopefully, we can move forward, collect the money in property taxes. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Steve. Move to council questions. Councilmember Guyba?
Thank you. Is this the same program that we had proved a while back with NEF's company? Are we still working with him on that, with that?
The property registration program with Cortez Brothers is, that's, that's related to foreclosed properties, this is a different?
Okay, different, so this is different than, than his property?
This is an effort, as Steve indicated, the end of the process in which the city tries to recover the cost. While we do thousands of these abatements and nuisance abatement, there are a few. It's not, it's not a big problem, there's a few that we need to go through this step. And in order to go through that step, we just have to have your approval to be able to prove the list, and then that list is, is the ability to, to collect the, the overdue fees through property tax assessments.
I just wanted that clarity because there's some questions about if they're two separate programs, and apparently they are.
Yes, sir, they are.
That's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other council questions, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimonies, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, seeing no rebuttal, hearing closed. Any deliberations, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations numbers through two through four. Okay, motion by Councilmember Guyba, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved four to zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
E2 is Public Hearing Establishing Appropriations, The GAN Limit for Fiscal Year 2018-2019, Report from the Financial Management Services Department. Marshall Ironman.
Good evening, Mayor, May- Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmembers. Uh, the GAN appropriations limit was the result of the passage of Proposition Four in nineteen seventy-nine, uh, which placed limits on the amount of tax proceeds that can be appropriated or spent each year. Uh, the state government code further requires a governing body to annually adopt a resolution, uh, for the GAN limit for the upcoming fiscal year. Typically, we do this as part of the budget process. Uh, we conducted this for the first year of the two-year budget with the last adoption, but as it is the second year of the budget we're approaching, we will do this independently for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And so for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the calculated appropriation limit for the general fund is a little less than a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, uh, with tax revenue subject to the limit totaling seventy-six million. For the CSD, the calculated limit is in excess of twenty million, uh, with tax revenue subject to, uh, the limit totaling a little over eleven million. Uh, what that means in both of these cases is we're approximately forty to forty-five percent below our appropriation limit, so we're well within the parameters as prescribed by law. Uh, the report this evening recommends that the City Council and the Community Services Board of Directors conduct public hearings to adopt the resolutions and establish the GAN appropriations limit. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Marshall. Any council questions? Routine item. I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Madam Clerk, public testimony?
None.
Okay, seeing no rebuttal, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. No deliberation. Okay, entertain a motion to approve Staff Recommendation Number Two. Motion by Councilmember Guyba? Second by Councilmember Cabrera? Go ahead and please vote. Approved, uh, four to zero. We'll move to entertain a motion by the CSD to approve Staff Recommendation Number Four.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baca? Second by myself? Okay, please vote. If not, we can just do a voice vote?
It's on your screen now.
Okay, and it's approved. We'll move on to Item E3, Public Hearing to Continue Moreno Valley Community Services District Annual Parcel Taxes and Charges for Fiscal Year 2018 and 2019, Report of the Public Works Department. And we'll have Candace, or Michael?
I'll just kick it off real quick, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, member, members of the City Council. Uh, as mentioned, this is our annual process, we have several special districts that require this process, and to get it on the county's tax roll, I'll ask our Special Districts Division Manager, Ca- Candace Castle, to give the report.
Good evening, Candace.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the City Council, Candace Castle, Special Districts Division Manager. Uh, as Mr. Wolf mentioned, um, this item is a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen parcel charges, which fund the city's community services districts. This is an annual process required by the county before it will accept the charges to be levied on next year's property tax bills. The proposed charges are a continuation of the charges currently levied on the property tax bills. If previously approved by the qualified electors, the maximum charge proposed for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen is calculated based on a CPI adjustment to the current year's maximum charge. The proposed applied charge is the amount that will actually be levied on the property tax bill. It represents the amount that is necessary to pay the expenses of the district for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed applied charges do not exceed the maximum charges. Revenue received for these districts support the following programs and services. Zone As Parks and Community Services Programs, the arterial street lighting program, which is Zone C, maintenance of public landscaping in medians or around the perimeter of developments to include Zone D, Zone E7, E8, and Zone M, and Zone S, the maintenance of certain improvements along Sunny Mead Boulevard. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing and then adopting the resolutions approving the CSD parcel charges for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Candace. Uh, any council questions of staff? They see none, go ahead and open the hearing. Public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one. Rafael Burguerras?
Good evening, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents and our guests. This, um, item touched me, because the mayor appointed me to be part of this committee, okay? So I read through it, and I went to assure that all property owners, that we will keep our promise to what I'm about to read, because it's important that the committee that I'm in, that we help, that we keep our promises to this part right here. Property owners pay the partial charges as part of their annual property tax bill. The property, the partial charges include information adjusting where, uh, applicable has been approved, okay? Funds, I'm gonna skip a little bit, because, uh, funds received for benefits of each zone are restricted. So when I'm trying to tell the property managers that the money that's collected for every district, for every parcel, will be only used for that particular area, it's important to know that, because you're paying taxes. And I know that we get angry when we hear the word taxed, or taxes. Nobody likes to pay any more than they have to, but your support, and what you do for this committee and this city, is important to the families, to have a place that's safe, clean, and fun to be at. While I'm on this committee, for the little bit of time that I'm allowed to be on there, I'm gonna assure and keep my promise, that your money will be used for this, for these things, and only these things. And, and that's my promise to you taxpayers, property owners. And I wanna thank you when you do that, because again, this is all for the city of Moreno Valley and the families that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. And I do wanna apologize, it was my oversight, I'd, I know you were here, but I didn't see you from there, so I would like to recognize Rafael Burguerras for being a committee member in our, uh, Parks and Trails Committee as well. Let's give him a round of applause. Alright. Any council deliberation? If not, close the hearing. Entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations numbers two through eight?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Mayor Pro Tem Baca? Okay, please vote. It's approved four to zero, we'll move on to Item E4, Public Hearing for Delinquent Solid Waste Accounts, Report of Public Works.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. This item before you this evening is a public hearing, uh, and a report to approve the delinquent solid waste accounts. Uh, this is an annual process. Uh, the delinquent counts, these are the ones that are over sixty days due, these are for the solid waste charges of the, or the trash. The delinquent report was generated by our solid waste provider, Waste Management, on May seventeenth. Uh, the account holders have until May, uh, July seventh to come off this list, otherwise, um, if it's approved, it goes to the county. There's a total of about sixty-six hundred delinquent solid waste accounts that are listed in the report, um, that's attached to this, to the staff report. If approved, uh, as mentioned, the delinquent accounts will be submitted to the county for inclusion in the tax roll. Uh, so therefore, staff recommends conducting the public hearing, taking comments, closing the public hearing, and absent compelling comments otherwise, approve the solid waste delinquent report, direct the clerk to file the report with the county. We do have, uh, representatives from Waste Management here as well, uh, they're, they're willing to stay by after this, um, uh, agenda item if necessary to answer any specific questions that folks may have that are here to, to ask specific about their property. But that concludes our report, available to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, Michael. Any council questions of staff? Go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Rafael Burguerras?
Evening once again, Mayor, council members, staff and residents and guests. You know, we all have an opportunity every Friday morning to look at the agenda that's sent out, and I'm one of them, just like many hundreds of residents do that. And when you look at E4 on the item, page four eighty-seven, it's shocking to see sixty-six hundred residents that are behind on their bill, and I don't know their status, but we're talking sixty-six hundred people do, do not pay their bill on time. And, and, and it adds up into the millions of dollars that Waste Management is trying to collect. And I believe that Waste Management are fair, and I believe they, they have a process where they allow their customers to call in and try, hopefully to arrange to make payments, to pay them, to pick up the garbage, I mean, that, that, I, I hope they have that. But I know there are people that don't care, so that forces the hands of the mayor and the council members to vote on an item that we don't need to do, but we have to. Sixty-six hundred, imagine if it was ten thousand, fifteen thousand people that don't pay, you know? I just said that, um, that, that, that many people are behind, uh, in paying their bills. Uh, I just hope that they will call Waste Management and try to get themselves, um, their names off this list, because, I mean, goodness, I know where you live, 'cause the list tells me where you live, as in a, you know? I hate to see it happen, but you have to take action, so this can clear up, so they'll know, and I know, as a resident, that pays Waste Management every quarter to pick up my garbage, that they're serious about getting paid and, um, and getting the streets cleaned up. I hate to see this happen, but it has to be done, so our city can continue to be clean and the most important thing, that we'll continue to beautify it. I'm just sad to see our neighbors, um, behind.
Okay, thank you, Rafael. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. Any council deliberation? Entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number two and three?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Cabrera?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Baca? Please vote. Okay, G1 was moved to the beginning of the agenda, we'll go to G2, and that was passed by four to zero. Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Sections 5.02, .390 and 5.02660, C5 of the Municipal Code. And we'll have, uh, Marshall, give a report of that.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Uh, to help support the establishment of new businesses and support greater customer service for the city, uh, this report recommends an adoption of an ordinance to amend the first-year term for a business license. Currently, if a new business license is received by October thirty-first, they would be required to submit a renewal fee by January first, um, sixty days later. The proposed amendment would add an additional thirty days to this process so that a new business license submitted after September thirtieth would not be required to submit a renewal fee until the following year. So by extending this timeline, we're able to better streamline the business license process for their businesses, uh, and make the process less confusing for those as they're beginning the first couple of months of their business operation. Uh, so with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And, um, okay, I'll say something later in the deliberation part, but any council questions? Okay, any public comments?
Yes, Rafael Burguerras?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. What I hope through this process, that our small businesses are informed of what we're doing, we better keep them here, 'cause that's what's important. We don't wanna confuse our small businesses. We don't make, we don't wanna make it any harder for them to pay anything extra than they, what they need to. That's what's important. So we wanna always be business friendly. You know, there, always gonna be something out there that are always gonna to challenge us. But what I'm trying to say to our business community is that we here, with the mayor and the council members and the staff, are trying to do things fair, to make it easy for you to stay in our city and do business and hire Moreno Valley residents. That's what's important to me and the rest of the residents in Moreno Valley. So, I'm glad that the staff finds ways for us to understand what's going on and for our business community, and that's what's important tonight, that they understand that we're always trying to be fair for them.
Thank you, Rafael. And I just wanted to, um, say, uh, I wanted to commend, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, uh, for working with staff, you know, on this item to, to be, uh, more business friendly, you know, and so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes, I think that this is a fabulous idea, I, it doesn't make sense to, you know, come in and, in the fall and then, uh, you pay your, uh, for your business license and then boom, you got a bill in the mail. So I think, um, it's a great idea and it's business friendly, and, um, what else can I say? Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, and thank you to staff as well for bringing this, getting this all together. You know, I had a couple of, uh, small business owners here in the city that, uh, came to me and said, "Hey, I just got my business license and I'm already having to renew it right away." So, uh, this is to kinda help them out a little bit more and, you know, be more business friendly, so thank you again.
Great. Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendation Number One. Motion by, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, second. By you? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Baca? So Cabrera and then Baca? Please vote. Okay, it's approved unanimously, we'll go ahead and go straight to, uh, reports. I just have a brief report on the, uh, Western Riverside Council of Governments, very, very brief. The items, the item covered was basically at the June fourth, twenty eighteen meeting, and basically, the Executive Committee, uh, just recommended approval of the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen draft agency budget by the General Assembly, uh, which, uh, will meet on June twenty-first, twenty eighteen. So it was very, very brief. Okay, next report, we have Councilmember Guyba, Western Riverside Council, no, sorry, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
RCA for short. That was just yesterday. Total, um, uh, mitigation fees on properties, uh, as far, uh, into April was one million five hundred eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six. Give me a moment here, and I'm gonna jump back to some other stuff, because there's some very interesting discussions that took place. First of all, we did, uh, acquire, uh, three new parcels in closed session, so you, we got that one. But, um, this is what was interesting, there's a couple of these that I wanted to just share with you. Item number nine on our agenda was the item for the Funds and Land Approval of Agreement Conditions, Use of Funds and Habitat Acquisition. It was a special deal that went down, I can't go into the total details on it, if you can always go to your agenda to look at it, but RCTC did a little bit of a negotiation, and RCA was the beneficiary of, uh, receiving some, uh, funds for that, to the tune of a hundred and seventeen thousand, I mean, excuse me, to the tune of, it's not here, but I'm not gonna go to that one right now. Uh, also on item number ten, RCA Board of Directors approved the Professional Services Agreement between the Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority and the Santa Ana Watershed Association for Biological Monitoring. Up until now- Up until now, RCA has always done all the biological monitoring, so we've kind of turned it over to what they, they call SAWA. And we sold them vehicles, we approved the sale of five vehicles and office electronic equipment valued a hundred and seventeen thousand, payable to RCA, and now they take over the biological monitoring. It's in our budget. We pay them a certain fee to do it, but we actually don't have, don't use the personnel anymore. We also approved the work plan to do that. Number twelve was very interesting as well. Resolution number two zero one eight of the Board of Directors of the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority rescinding a resolution from two thousand fifteen, Ambrosia relocation. And it's a little bit of a complex thing, but there had a couple lawsuits going on in there and they said, we don't want you to be involved in the lawsuits and so we'll just kind of get you out of that one right now. That's about as quick as I can say about it. We have three properties that were acquired and that's pretty much what I can give you. It was a little bit of a fun day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gaiba. And we have city managers' report?
Thank you Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. At our last meeting, some residents spoke about the condition of a county-owned fleet maintenance facility located near Cottonwood and Paris. Last week, Assistant City Manager Brock and I met onsite with the county's purchasing fleet director as well as their fleet manager. And we, we talked with them onsite about aesthetic improvements that the county can make there. I'm pleased to report to the public that the county will plant trees along the front of the facility on Cottonwood as well as some other drought tolerant landscaping. They will also remove the, the unsightly barbed wire from the, from the front fence and install some slats in the chain link fence there. They'll also seek approval from the Board of Supervisors to move ahead with constructing a new fleet maintenance facility there. Second item, we congratulated Steve Alvarado on his appointment. I'd also like to congratulate another internal promotee. Angelique Davis has been promoted to our Purchasing and Facilities Division Manager. Angelique's been with the city for several years in a number of capacities and we're always thrilled to, to make internal promotions. So congratulations Angelique. Last night, the mayor and council celebrated the reopening of the soccer complex at Community Park. They were joined by hundreds of young soccer players, coaches, parents. And it really was a wonderful event and a fitting way to celebrate a renovation project that will really mean so much to the community. We thank the city council for investing in this very important amenity, one that will provide health benefits as well as contribute to quality of life for residents of all ages. This evening, a speaker asked about steps being taken to address speeding on Chigal. A project is moving forward to install speed tables and Chigal is being closed at Alessandro to prevent, the median is being closed to prevent people from making left turns and going up there. So that, that should be a real benefit for residents there. And on another important topic, we know that many Moreno Valley families are celebrating high school graduation. It's a wonderful time of the year and just want to let them know the city is celebrating right along with them. The M on Box Springs Mountain is being lit with school colors on the night of each graduation ceremony. This began last week for Rancho Verde's graduation. Tonight, the M will appear in teal to coincide with the Canyon Springs graduation. Tomorrow, we'll recognize Moreno Valley High with blue and gold. On Thursday, we'll be red for Valley View. And on Friday, it's purple and silver for Vista Del Lago High School. So on that happy note, I'll conclude my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's report?
Nothing tonight. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you so much. That brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. You will have five minutes for your closing comments. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Gaiba.
I, I really don't, I have only one request. While back, the residents continued to request that we had a six district study session put forward. We had that on the study session and then it was abruptly tabled to another date. So I'm going to number one, request that we would like to bring that back for a study session. Now this isn't just me, this is a lot of residents. The city is a hundred, two hundred and ten thousand people and every one of our districts are at least fifty thousand, which is larger than most California cities themselves. The city of Riverside has seven districts. We can better serve our constituents when we have a little bit smaller group of constituents to do so. The, there was an original study session many years ago on whether to go to four or six districts. And that was quite a time back, so I think it's time to bring that discussion back for the residents to, to hear and be able to make their own decisions. This is something that will probably have to go to the vote of the public and therefore they should be educated on the, on the good reasons or the bad reasons so they can make an informed decision on behalf of this city. This city belongs to two hundred and ten thousand people for all intents and purposes, they're the taxpayers. And they would like to have this conversation. One of the residents mentioned to me that she had requested it from Tom DeSantis, our city manager, and he said he would bring it forward. I'm hoping he'll keep that promise. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the art fest. That was completely successful. It was a very nice event. A lot of people turned out. The weather was nice. It wasn't too hot. We had a breeze. So thank you to all the bands who came out, all the artists from all over the place, not just Moreno Valley, but a lot of our local talent was showcased this past weekend and everyone was so happy. So thank you to all the departments who brought that together, especially the Parks Department and Public Works. You guys did a really, really nice job. Looking forward to, to the next one. Also, thank you to the Moreno Valley Cultural Arts Foundation, who's, uh, who's led by Rick Archer who spoke earlier. And also the Arts Commission for helping out with advertising and having a booth there. In July, we're going to have a food truck festival as a part of Movial Rocks, Movial Movies, right here at the rec center, so I'm looking forward to that as well. On June twenty-third, we will have a community cleanup. Thank you, Michael Wolf, Public Works, for always helping us with these. So June twenty-third, Iris and LaSalle around that intersection will be cleaning up. If anyone wants to volunteer, any community service hours, or you just want to come help, feel free to reach out to us. We'll be putting those flyers out online and around the neighborhood. Today, a, a couple of people have already mentioned it, but it is the last day to vote. Please don't forget to go out there and, I mean, cast your vote and just, you know, have your voice be heard. Also, I would like to thank the Police Department, our Chief, Chief Kerlowitz. You guys have been doing excellent job recently. Maybe it's because I'm new to the council, but in the past couple of months, you know, since you've taken over, I've seen a huge spike in activity and I just, just thank you for all you've been doing recently. Positive activity. Taking care of the bad stuff. Taking care of the bad guys.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And also to our code enforcement, I know I've been giving them a lot of cases to go out, but they're staying on top of it. I appreciate that very much. Couple more things here. Let's see, also in our effort to, to build community, and that's one of the things that I really wanted to focus on here on the city council, and we've been doing that through having more of these events like art festivals, food truck festivals, community cleanups. And also, this is the first time we're gonna have something like this, but the My Movial Summit in July, I believe it's July twelfth is what we're shooting for. So that's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come out. Organizations, schools, nonprofits, anyone to come out and just learn about the different programs that we have here in the city and to just communicate with each other, you know, building that sense of community. We have to share information and meet new people and really connect with each other to help each other out here in our city and to help our people. So that'll be July twelfth here at the rec center for the My Movial Summit. And thank you to Marshall and the Finance Office for helping us. Let's see, also, the Moreno Valley College commencement is this Thursday. I'm just so happy to see all these graduates, you know, get to walk, get their degrees, certificates, and be able to go on to the next step, just achieving that education. And I also had an opportunity to visit Rising Stars Business Academy and speak to the youth there. And the, the main point I was trying to get across was just don't ever stop learning. You know, just continue to learn, continue to obtain that information and then use that to help others and share that with other people. So I'm just really happy whenever I see, you know, my peers, my colleagues, friends, family getting educated because in that way they can help even more. And I'm glad to see that we have more partnerships that are growing with the college, with the school districts, with, with everyone here in the city. And I'm looking forward to just building on that and continuing to grow into the future. That's all I have for tonight, so thank you and have a good night.
Thank you Councilmember Cabrera. We have Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Well, first of all, I want to say congratulations to all the Moreno Valley High School graduates and Moreno Valley College graduates and everyone else from Moreno Valley that's attending schools outside the cities. It's that time of the year and I know that you've worked very hard to get your diplomas and degrees, so congratulations. And I want to thank our city manager and staff for lighting up the M with different colors. For example, teal for Canyon Springs and purple for the Vista Del Lago Ravens. So keep, keep your eye on the M. This Saturday, I'll be attending the Relay for Life and it's gonna be held at the California School for the Deaf this Saturday. So hopefully you can attend and support this great cause. And lastly, I want to encourage everyone, you have forty-five minutes left, please go out and vote. Thank you.
And for my comments, just wanted to, again, just piggyback on the graduation, graduations that are taking place this week. Just want to wish everyone, you know, congratulations, you know, for those that are graduating. Also the families, I'm sure they're really proud and happy. And, you know, just to be safe during graduation week, I think that's really important. I also wanted to mention that I attended the art fest and wow, it was really, really amazing. It really was. And I do got to commend our Parks and Community Services Director Patty. Thank you so much, you know, for your work. When I got there, I saw you there, you were, you know, you were just working already. So I mean, that was just awesome and while I was there, you were there. So it was, it was great. It was great to see that. And I also want to thank the staff, you know, thank you Tom, you know, I believe, you know, you came late, later. So I do want to thank you for that. And I also want to commend Councilmember Cabrera as well because, you know, he put up a lot of work in working with different organizations and, and all of that, and the Arts Commission, the Cultural Foundation and, and then obviously working with the staff and, and everything. But again, commendations go to the staff. Thank you again. I attended the Moreno Valley Soccer Dedication Ceremony. It was very well attended. So I don't know if they just heard about it or if the staff reached out, but I thought that was really amazing that there were a lot of people there from the community. A lot of times when we have these community events, we'll, we'll have the same people that are there and that, and that's okay. But, you know, it's nice to sometimes see new people, you know, and more people that, that come to, to events. So I just wanted to say that that was a really, really nice to see. And I'm, and I know that they're really excited about the turf. I also want to commend the staff also for working with Moreno Valley Unified School District. That was something that I envisioned with the apprenticeship program. Obviously, it's piggy, piggyback from the Summer at City Hall program. And this is something that's gonna help our students or special needs students throughout the whole year. So it's not just in the summer, it's gonna be in the fall and the spring and it's gonna, it should be a total of eighty students. And I think that's just gonna be really amazing for them because they really don't get those opportunities. And I don't know if Candace is still here. Oh, okay, there you are. But, you know, I just wanted to say that part of, you know, without mentioning the student's name, you know, the student that you had, you know, that was part of one of the reasons why I wanted to extend it throughout the whole year. Was because of the work that you, how, how well you worked with that student. I also wanted to mention that I will be attending the US Mayor's Conference this Thursday. This is a conference where mayors from all over the city come to get, all over the country, not all over the city, but come together to, to discuss projects that are happening and issues that are happening. But this is really an opportunity to get ideas. This is where, you know, the homeless to work comes from, you know, and Councilmember Cabrera was there last year as well. So many different ideas come from these conferences and that's what I really like about the US Mayor's Conference. And I'm really looking forward to putting Moreno Valley on the map at the conference. So this meeting will adjourn at seven eighteen PM.